Ladies and gentlemen, we're getting started just a little bit late here, but it is August 21st, 2018. We're here at 6:01 at City Hall, 116th West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. The Granbury City Council Regular Council Meeting is now called to order. I'd like to call upon Mike Mann with the Fellowship Church of Hood County to lead us in our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge led by Councilman Greg Corrigan. All rise please.
Please pray with me. Father, your word says that you reward those who diligently seek you. So I'm seeking your guidance for our city council members and those of us who are here tonight. Thank you for your presence. Help us to remember that we're in your presence as this meeting is being held. Give the devil no opportunity to bring worry, unforgiveness, strife, or criticism into this meeting. There'll be no idle or foolish talk so we can be a blessing to each other. Show us how to talk answers, not problems, since the answers are in your word. As we pray, unite us as a group. Show us how not to be moved by adverse circumstances. As the devil tries to challenge us, we will resist him through our faith and let patience have her perfect work. We'll remember that he is a defeated enemy because Jesus conquered him. He's overcome by the blood of the Lamb and the power of our testimony. Thank you, Father, for being joyous as you hear us now living and walking in truth. Thank you that these prayers are forever in your throne room. Thank you that there are no limits on prayer in the name of Jesus, and help us in this council run the race set before us as we look to Jesus, the Author and Finisher of our faith. The earnest prayer of a righteous man makes tremendous power available, dynamic in its working because the eyes of the Lord are upon the righteous, those who are upright and in right standing with God, and his ears are open to our prayers. We love you, Lord, and we praise and thank you for our elected leaders and the work they do through you for us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Show me the pledge. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honoring the Texas flag, my pledge of allegiance to be, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. I will note that we do have a forum tonight, but we have two council members who will not be with us tonight, Councilperson Trish Reiner and Councilman Tony Allen. At this time, I would like to present a proclamation honoring the Hunger Action Month. We have Jeanette Scott. And is Charles Boswell with us today? Oh, yeah? I think he got hung up at the Crescent Train Pass. Let's hope not. Well, we'll go ahead and get started with the proclamation. I mean, Charles will show up here, but this is a proclamation today where we are recognizing September as the Hunger Action Month. The proclamation reads as, "Whereas one in every six people in North Texas struggle with hunger and food insecurities, including one in every four children; and whereas 13% of American households and 17% of American households with children do not consistently have enough nutritious food to eat; and whereas children from families struggle with hunger may be more likely to repeat a grade in elementary school, experience developmental impairments in areas like language and motor skills, and have more social and behavioral problems; and whereas partner agencies in Hood County are distributed food by Tarrant Area Food Bank, which provides more than 2 million meals over 47,000 households in 13 Texas counties monthly; and whereas the month of September has been designated as Hunger Action Month in order to bring attention to the reality of food insecurities and promote ways for individuals to get involved in the movement to end hunger, including volunteering, hosting food drives, and donating funds. Now therefore, be it resolved that I and Ingham, the mayor of the city of Granbury, Texas, do proclaim, hereby proclaim, September as Hunger Action Month." We'll get out here and get a little photograph so you can tell Charles what he missed out on. Those items being considered, approving the city council meeting minutes of August 7th, 2018's regular meeting. Number two, consider approving the Designated Management Agency Resolution #1819. Number three was to consider and accept an abandonment of a portion of a 10-foot utility easement that was quoted in volume 2252, page 211, RRHCT. And number four was to consider awarding bid #17-18-02 for the Granbury Regional Airport Electric Distribution Relocation Project. Number five was to consider adopting Resolution #18-20, designating the countersigners for any check, voucher, or warrant pursuant to the city charter provision 8.08. And number six, consider approving ordinance #18-52 granting Tri-County Electric Corporation an electric power franchise to use the public right-of-way of the city of Granbury. And number seven, to consider approving ordinance #18-53, providing for revision to the city's master fee schedule. And council, you see that there were several red lines of the master fee schedule there that had been changed, and some of them also added too. So I hope we've had an opportunity to look over those fee changes. Are there any changes or any items on the consent agenda that the council wishes to discuss or pull off and move to the deliberation agenda? If none said, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Couch. Council, any more discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That is approved. Next, we'll move into our deliberation agenda. Our first item, which is identified as a public hearing, and we'll go ahead and leave it as a public hearing, but it's a public hearing to consider approving the amended facility improvement agreement with FIA 18-08. I'm gonna call upon our city manager, Chris Coffin, to give us the staff report on that, if you would please.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, as you'll recall at our last meeting, we approved this FIA agreement with Lake Villa's Apartments and also their final plat, and they're moving forward with construction. We did have a caveat that we needed to add to some type of agreement, a Chapter 380 Development Agreement or amendment to the FIA to allow to reflect the financial impact that the city is incurring with this project. And so we decided that the best instrument to do that with would be to amend the facilities improvement agreement that we approved last council meeting. And so we presented that in the form of amendment here, but basically for the, in a nutshell, what that amendments do is it shows that the developer has to rebuild a lift station and extend about 640 feet of forced main to tie into the main lift station over by Ingham Park. So in order to upsize that, we needed to participate with them somewhat on the cost of that. That's about a half million dollar hit, and the city agreed to reimburse them once the development is fully completed, $69,000 out of the utility fund as an incentive for that project. Also, you'll remember that we did a variance to where it did not require them to run a water line in front of their property from one end to the other, and they were required to put in an eight-inch line. But since we were doing the loop project with a 12-inch line, we were able to use that as additional incentive to allow them to spend more money on that sewer to make that happen. So the value of that was about $180,000. So all in, we're at about a quarter million dollars of infrastructure invested in that project. It's kind of a soft-shoe type investment, but we were gonna put that 12-inch water line in whether that apartment complex happened or not. But I did want to document that as part of this project and at least see that it was transparent in the records that way. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. We've got all the documents here that we put together for that. If you have any questions.
Council, you need to address all of your questions to Chris, 'cause I see Rick Brown is not after it.
Right. He's taking care of some personal items.
So is there any questions or concerns on this item? Since I have noted this as a public hearing, I will open it up to the public. If there's anybody in the public who wishes to talk on this matter? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Council? If no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve that FIA.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Corrigan and a second by Councilman Mobley. Council, any more discussion on this FIA? I want to note that we're amending the FIA, I'm sorry. If no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That is approved, amend the FIA. Our next item is also a, is the first public hearing on the proposed property admiralorm tax rate of .0399385 for the fiscal year 2018-2019. Once again, I'll call upon Chris Coffin and the staff.
Okay. As required by law, we're to conduct a public hearing. If you'd like to open the public hearing, the public can certainly make a comment. But this is the budget number that we've been talking about for quite some time. We talked about it at the Budget Workshop. This is the same tax rate that we've had for the last five years. However, it does generate about $79,000 more in revenue than last year because of the admiralorm tax values have increased. And that's the reason why we're having a public hearing, is because the law requires if you increase any revenue from your tax rate that you're gonna adopt, you have to have two public hearings. This is well below the rollback rate of 8% rollback would be quite a bit more, would be around 45 cents. So this is just, the effective rate was 39.3 cents, so this is about a half, I guess it's five mils, five mils, five one-hundredths of a cent increase over the effective rate, but it is the same rate as we've had for years, so.
And most of you wouldn't pick that up in the parking lot if you saw it.
So with that, I'll open up the public hearing. I will open the public hearing to the public to discuss, anybody in the public who wishes to discuss the proposed tax rate.
Put it to order. Item number nine is not returning.
There we go, there it is. We got it there now. Thank you, Fay. Thank you.
Perfect. I might just also state that during this hearing, we're required by the state law to announce that the actual vote on this tax rate will occur on September 18th, 2018, at 6:00 PM during our regular council meeting. We have now met the requirements of the law.
Took the word right out of my mouth. So if there's no public comment on this, and like Chris said, we have set the time and the date for that, that item is complete. Our next item is to consider appointing members of the Granbury Cultural Arts Commission for staggered terms with the even-numbered positions serving in the initial term and the one-year, and the odd-numbered positions serving in the term for the two-years. Council, you were given the list of applicants, and you were also given a list of the recommendations by the Granbury Arts Alliance, but these are related to the commission's appointments of the Granbury Cultural Arts Commission. These are recommendations that were, per the ordinance, created through the commission. So these are what, and they have them in the order of what they think that, or what they had seen as the people to put on these, but as you can see, they've reached out and given them to us. I think everybody got them today, right, or yesterday? But here again, you're free to appoint whoever you desire, but like I said, because of the requirement by the ordinance, they have submitted this list for us also. So what I'd like to do, council, at this point, we are going to be putting four people as a city resident and three people as a non-city resident. So I'm gonna start with the city residents, and what I'm going to be asking for out of the council is nominations for those four seats.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
I would like to follow the advice of the suggestions made by the committee loosely. I would like to nominate, in the city, Phil Gershell, Val Hibbler, Shad Ramsey, and Patricia Hall. Non-city residents, Heather Cleveland.
Wait, hang on, I'm just gonna go with the city one right now.
Okay.
Okay, so we've got four from Councilman Mobley. Any other council members have any nominees for the city residents?
I'd like to nominate Teresa Anderson.
Teresa Anderson. Council, any more recommendations? If none, we have Teresa Anderson, Phil Gershell, Patricia Hall, Val Hibbler, Hibbler, and Shad Ramsey. So I'm gonna go in the order of that they appear just on our handout from Carla. And I'm gonna have a show of hands, so keep your hands up so that we can get a count. And the top four will be named as the city resident folks that we will put on there. Show of hands, Patricia Anderson. Show of hand for Phil Gershell. Get it up, get it up. All right, there you go. Patricia Hall. And Shad Ramsey. Carla, I think you got the same as I got, but I have three for Phil, three for Patricia, and three for Val, and three for Shad Ramsey. Given that, four will be the appointees for the city residents. Phil Gershell, Patricia Hall, Val Hibbler, Shad Ramsey.
Should I make a motion on them separate, or should we go ahead and do the others and then make a motion altogether?
What we'll do, we'll go ahead and get them all selected, and then we'll make a motion to put these people on the board. Next, we'll go to the non-residents. Here again, council, you've got a pretty lengthy list, and I do want to stop here and say that everybody that has applied, I appreciate everybody applying for these positions. You know, a long time ago, we didn't have enough people to put on our boards, and now we have an abundance of folks. We have people that are waiting in line to get on these boards, and that is a good problem to have. So bear in mind, we're gonna be keeping these names on our list for people in the future that we might want to put on these boards and stuff. So if you don't make it this first time, then there's possibility you'll be selected or considered for the next time around. So we do appreciate everybody that has concerns and wants to participate on these boards for us. Now we're going to the non-city residents, and here again, we'll be selecting three folks.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
I'd like to nominate Heather Cleveland, Robert Cook, and Kelly Sorrell.
Kelly, 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 okay. Council, any more nominees?
I'd like to also nominate Stacy Martin.
Stacy Martin from Councilman Couch. Council, any more nominations? So with no more nominees, we will go to the vote. I'll go in the order that we have here. All in favor of Heather Cleveland, show of hands. All in favor of Robert Cook, show of hands. All in favor of Kelly Sorrell. And all in favor of Stacy Martin. Stacy Martin, is that it?
Could you try that one more time?
Can we go through the list again?
Would you want, I mean, can you do that?
All in favor of Heather Cleveland.
There we go.
All in favor of Robert Cook. All in favor of Kelly Sorrell. Three is not. All in favor of Stacy Martin. Okay, those three, those three non-residents will be Heather Cleveland, Robert Cook, and So those will be our residents for the Cultural Arts Commission, our city, and our non-residents. So at this time, I will call out the names of those folks, and we will nominate them in. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to put Phil Gershell, Patricia Hall, Val Hibbler, Shad Ramsey, Heather Cleveland, Robert Cook, and Kelly Sorrell on our Granbury Cultural Arts Commission for the upcoming term.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley and a second by Councilman Corrigan. Council, any more discussion on these selections? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That is approved. Congratulations, folks. This is a brand-new commission. Look forward to some really good things. I see Dominique shaking her head, that's gonna happen, right? Our next item is to consider appointing a member to the Granbury Television Channel Advisory Board and the Zoning Board of Adjustments to fill one vacant seat on each. We will, we would do them separately, but the first one we would do will be the Public Television, the Advisory Board, or the Public Television Channel Advisory Board. Our current members are John Back, Maureen Griffin, Ronnie Hurd, and I'm gonna butcher this name, Nut Hybendet.
Close, right.
Kevin Myers, Mitch Warren, and then we have a vacancy. So here again, we have one vacancy for this, for this, and we have two, I'm sorry, three applications. We have Laura Bush, John Boyd, and Jack DiAmario. So council, once again, I'm looking for a nomination for that position.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
I'd like to nominate Jack DiMario.
Okay, we have a nomination for Dr. Jack DiMario. Any more nominations for the TV Advisory Board, council? If none, I'll entertain a motion to nominate Jack DiMario to the TV Advisory Board.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Couch. Any more discussion on that nomination? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Jack will be our new Public Television Channel Advisory Board member. Our next one is our Zoning Board of Adjustments. Our current members are Eileen Kate, Tom Baker, Fay Landham, Ronnie Hurd, Ernestine Sugar, Mary Ellen Riley, she is an alternate, and there is a vacant alternate member. We have one vacancy here. We have, once again, three applicants, Kenneth Cadenhead, Stephen Foster, and Michael Chavita. Council?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to nominate Kenneth Cadenhead.
We have a motion for Kenneth Cadenhead. Council, any more nominees?
Nominate, nominate, excuse me.
Yeah, it's gonna be an alternate member, yeah. If no other nominations, I'll entertain a motion to select Kenneth Cadenhead as the alternate member for the Zoning Board of Adjustments.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Corrigan and a second by Councilman Couch. Vice versa.
Order.
Any more discussion on this nomination? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That is approved. Kenneth Cadenhead will be the alternate for the Zoning Board of Adjustments. Our next item on the agenda is to review and take action as necessary regarding an internal audit of Visit Granbury question as performed by the city staff. I'm gonna let Chris Coffin explain exactly what the audit was done, or when it was done, and the findings that was, and some of the recommendations that was done on this audit. So if you would, please, Chris.
Thank you, Mayor. As your city manager, it's kind of my job to administer oversight for at least tax dollars that go out. I did ask the finance director to get with Visit Granbury and conduct an internal audit as required or allowed in our contractual arrangement. So she did find some things, and the comments and recommendations are set forth in your memo as discussed thoroughly, and I guess if I was an auditor, I would probably stand at the lectern and talk about it a little bit. Ava, would you just mind coming to share your comments and your recommendations like we would do so with our auditor if we had our internal audit completed? And then maybe we can add some comment after this part's over with.
Good evening, council, city manager, city attorney. On July 23rd, I believe, or 24th, I went over and conducted an audit at Visit Granbury. Visit Granbury was very much ready for me, and they had all their required documents available for my review, very organized. Going back for the last three years, their financial statements, bank statements, everything was available. So I was able to review all that information, and I answered any questions I had at that point. My comments really just give some recommendations on strengthening their internal controls. And as you know, the city has a funding agreement that is an agreement between the city and Visit Granbury that requires certain criterias to be met. And as the city manager have explained, those are some things we have to follow as the tax collection of the hot tax that the city collects is 90% of that is transferred to Visit Granbury. So we have a certain oversight that we have to follow, as well as Visit Granbury have a bylaws agreement that they follow. Based on reviewing both of those, the funding agreement and Visit Granbury's bylaws, I was able to... was able to make some recommendations based on some of the shortfalls that I found while conducting the audit. One of them was when Visit Granberry had issued cashier's check on April 20th, 2018 in the amount of $18,097 to beaten van lines, which was for moving expenses. This cashier's check was only endorsed by the CEO of Visit Granberry, and the bylaws require that any old checks over $1,500 need to be signed by at least two board members, either the chairman, the vice chairman, the secretary, or the treasurer, or the president, or CEO. They did provide me documentation that showed that they had a check request available at that point, but my recommendation would be that in the future, they would issue a check through the, through Visit Granberry, and with the check, they, if they have to use a cashier's check, first they issue a check, have two of the signers sign the checks, and then they can turn that check into and obtain a cashier's check. And with that, they would meet their own bylaws where, per their bylaws, it requires that when dispersing checks, as I mentioned before, anything over $1,500 would be signed by two of the board members. The next comment I had, we had received the June financial report, and on the June financial report, we had received, we were able to review the budget for Visit Granberry. We compared that budget with the approved budget by the city council and the amended budget by the city council, which was completed back on March 6th, 2018. There were some differences. The budget that was provided to our city council in June did not match the final approved budget that was approved back in March, 2018. So my comments at this point referred to the funding agreement. The funding agreement asks that, requests that Visit Granberry submits a proposal for a proposed budget to the city council, or if during the year, should there be any need to make changes to the budget, all budget amendments are approved by the city council. And that is per the funding agreement. There is, in the funding agreement, it notes that Visit Granberry may relocate funds within the budget among line items to meet changing conditions. At that point, all they need to do is notify the city manager about these changes. The next comment, I had additional comments. There were a couple other checks that were not endorsed by two staff members that were over $1,500. And again, referring to the disbursement section of the bylaws, all checks over $1,500 have to be endorsed by two of the board members. I also found that there was a transfer from the general fund funds to the hot funds on March 31st in the amount of $10,000. But after researching this transfer, it was clarified that one of the checks that were supposed to be issued out of the general fund account was actually issued out of the hot account. That was for the Chamber of Commerce fireworks expense, and that is the reason they had to do a transfer from one account to the other. Again, Visit Granberry have agreed to review their processes and ensure that in the future they make sure that the checks are cut from the right account. I believe these were my, all my findings after reviewing the financial statements and all documentation Visit Granberry provided me. If you have any questions, I would be more than happy to answer them.
Ava, or, excuse me, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Just for clarification, because I know BGI, they have, don't they have a finance policy, or finance?
Yes.
Procedures, excuse me. So is there a part in there that addresses cashier's checks, or not?
I am not sure. I really was reviewing the funding agreement and their bylaws.
Okay.
That would override their internal policies.
So I'll see that that is addressed, if there is not. And then back to the budget issue. When you said the budgets were not the same, you're talking, are you talking about the entire budget was not the same number, or line items were not the same number?
I mainly reviewed the budget categories Visit Granberry has. They have six major budget categories that summarizes their budget, and those major categories, when I added them together on your report that you received from me, you are able to see what was the final approved budget and how it compared to the June budget, and what were the differences at that point. And I brought it to their attention, and they agreed, they were able to see that the June financial report, which listed the budget, did not agree with the final approved budget.
Okay. Well, I know you put a lot of work into it, so thank you for doing that.
Okay.
Counsel, any more questions for Ava or Chris, or is there representatives from the Visit Granberry out there?
We didn't invite them, but, you know, it wasn't supposed to be a public hearing, so...
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
This is kind of a short subject, it's going to be a short meeting, so... But I've got a couple of questions. So a couple of violations of bylaws due to single signature when there should have been two. Is this something that's hidden in the bylaws? Is this something we should have highlighted? I mean, this seems like common practice. I'm wondering, we've got a, and whose signature was on these? I guess is my question.
Teresa had signed.
On all of these?
Yes. Isn't that right?
The cashier's check was assigned by Teresa Anderson, yes.
So if there's a person in the organization that should know the bylaws, if you had to... Wouldn't that be one of the persons that probably should? And I'm just wondering how this happens, because to me, it's common practice. I mean, I've been on the board of many nonprofits in town, and it's just standard practice. In fact, many of them, if it's over $250, it has to have two signatures. So I'm just wondering how this gets lost. We've got a director that, it's been stated several times with 25 years' experience, we had to pay her a hefty salary to get her here, keep her here. She, maybe, she's got a phone expenses, she's got an entertainment expense monthly, $800 to $1,000 a month, and yet we can't get two signatures on a check. So I'm just puzzled. The, I guess, and one of my questions is, we got an amended budget, I guess, this week, and it referenced a bonus, a $26,000 bonus, and we're pulling...
Point of order, Mayor.
Counsel?
The discussion is about the audit.
And, Mr. Mayor, what I'm looking at is the processes. The audit is dealing with the processes, and those ignored in the past, and I just want to make sure we don't go forward with that.
Let's stay, okay, and let's stay on the audit issues, because we got three, two of those that we've had findings with, and we've had recommendations with, so let's continue to discuss those.
If you had to... I'll close down with that. I think I've said enough, and I think everybody knows what's going on here. Thank you.
Mayor.
One second. And Ava, now, we have, now, have we as a city addressed these with the recommendations, or is this something that we are recommending here, and we haven't sat down with Visit Granberry?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Right. And so this is the board that contracts with them, and we needed to bring this to you to get your feedback, what you would like to see done with Visit Granberry, and here's the recommendations that Ava has put together, but, you know, under what authority do Ava or I have to be able to instruct their board what to do? It needs to come from this council, and that's what we're looking for, is direction from you on what to do with this audit.
Okay, Mayor.
Councilman Couch.
I'd like to make a motion to direct the city manager and our chief financial officer to submit this audit formally to Visit Granberry, and let them know that we expect them to implement the recommendations by our CFO.
So at this time, we have a motion to direct the city manager and his staff to sit down with Visit Granberry and to correct these issues and make, and put policies in place.
Well, the policies are in place. They just need to follow our recommendations.
So what was the latter part of the motion, Councilman Couch?
Just to implement the recommendations made by our chief financial officer.
Okay. So sit down with the city manager and the chief financial officer and implement the recommendations to, with Visit Granberry, correct?
Yes.
So there we have a motion. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Have a second by Councilman Corrigan. Once again, any more discussion, counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I guess my question is, are we simply asking them to follow the bylaws that are in place and have been?
Yes.
Do you concur with that, Councilman Couch?
Yes.
Okay. Any more questions? Councilman Corrigan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Couch, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Mobley, how do you vote?
Aye.
That is approved. We look forward to the city manager and staff working with him. Well, like Councilman Mobley said, this looks like maybe a short meeting here at this time. I'll now declare that the Granberry City Council is convened in open session, that all members except for Councilman Allen and Councilperson Reiner are present. The city council will now go into closed session pursuant to the provision of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections, Section 551-087, 551-071, and 551-072. We are now going to executive session. Has reconvened into open session, there was no action taken in executive session. With that said, counsel, is there any more discussion? If no more discussion, the council meeting is adjourned.